May the God's Holy Name be glorified!
The Bible also has indirect and some dreams that we can read in the scriptures.
Likewise, indirectly in the Bible too, you can read at some of the dreamers just dreaming.
If you see a dream in your world, you see a dream where someone is sleeping, they will not wake up.
And if they are dreaming a dream that the building was destroyed and they think that some marriage is going to work in this house.
This is what humans have imagined, the world people have imagined in this way. Likewise, indirectly in the scriptures, you can read at some of the dreamers just dreaming. I have been urging and some are having some doubts regarding this dream and so I got this subject this evening. Some dreams happen as such. We can see the date and time it is performed, we can see this in the world. There was a person who was called as a prophet in some period. He has written something so hidden and it was also it is joining in this time. The Bible says that and everything is revealed out of the dreams to the person of this world. Yohubur, 33, 15 to 18.
Book of Job, chapter 33, verse 15 to 18. In a dream, in a vision of the night, when deep sleep falleth upon men, in slumberings upon the bed, then he opened the ears of men and sealed their instruction that he may withdraw man from his purpose and hide pride from man, he keepeth back his soul from the pit and his life from perishing by the sword. When you read this, it is different and it is very clear. And the Lord revealed the man and also seen on it in the instruction. And the Lord is giving him dream that he have withdrawn from his purpose. And he was subjecting his pride through this dream. And he keepeth back his soul from the pit. And some of the dreams are so marvelous for us. And some of the dreams which have dreamed was fulfilled to me. And the dreams which they have concerned before being, were also fulfilled. At the same time, it was happened too. Sometime the transfers which was performed and the perfect date. One day, a person called me and said, "By this day and this time, you were travelling in this road and this incident is happening to you." And I thought that I am totally travelling through this ministry and if I die, it doesn't matter, let it be. But the years are not mentioned? And the poor thing was passed away. At the same time, I went for the convention preaching. And it was a terrible accident. I was escaped. And I had it that it should not be revealed outside. But when the prayer is finished, you cannot say it, because it is a great miracle. At the month and prayer, it did not mention because I was escaped, it was a great thing to me. And the one who was wounded and he was escaped out of death and it is a greatest achievement. So I said with the month and prayer. And the central pastor at that time, he did not desire it. But when the prayer is finished, a particular person called me and said then, "Which was the date?" So on the same date and same month, on the same route. Then the Lord reveals his purpose to every man and he helps them to help rescue from that place. If they are getting a dream to be getting any accident and you should not think that or should not pray that they must die, you must help them in prayer to rescue out of it. Sometimes the devil may be purpose or determined that you have to pray through your prayers. And that is the plan of God. Dreams, visions and the things that are all revealed to us, you must stand in the gap for it. May the God's Holy Name be glorified! Even the Pharaoh dreamed the dreams and he is not a child of God and he was not a child of God and he was a stranger but it was happened to him. And what is going to happen in his kingdom either may be the famine or the blessing of prosperity and it was known to him in hidden ways. And he was getting with great knowledge about the prison. And the cup bearer and he dreamed dream. And he got victory. Joseph dreamed dream. The dream that he dreamed that the age of seventy was fulfilled at the age of thirty. And what do we understand from this and the Lord kept a chance for man to rescue out of the dream that he dreams. So I don't want to tell that all the dreams will be performed as such. And some not the people, they will not sleep and they will be always engaged in dreams. And some team are there whatever happens and whatever it may took place and they see and they saw the dream ambitions. Some dreams are very famous, we know them, they have a lot of money, they have a lot of gifts. Sometime the dreams and we have that and we may have the pocket full of money but we don't have even a single piece in the packet. When we look into Song 73. Niththari telinda udane, suppanam odivadu pol, anavare. Niththari telinda udane, edhu bairo. Then when you think of a dream, you forget it, you forget it. When the wake out of the dream and you don't know what the dream they have dreamed, it will be disappeared. Many reasons for the dreams are mentioned in the Bible. And if you are thinking something and you sleep and you will have the dream concerning the same thing. So don't believe the dreams and you have to discern in the spirit. When we look into Ecclesiastes, chapter 5, verse 3. And because of the touches and you the dreams help the thoughts. And the dreams comes because of the multitude of business. When we look into Ecclesiastes, chapter 5, verse 7. And many of the dreams of vanity. What do we understand from this? When the problems touch the peak and you will get the various kinds of dreams. And many diverse dreams of vanity. And unnecessarily it may touch and it may go pass away. And there will not be head or tail. And no beginning and end. And without in reason, it goes like a cinema. And some of the dreams are dreamed that if they end today and it will start from tomorrow. The same cinema or the same dream are continued after two weeks. And so I had a thought to talk about the dream today. And we have to take the truths from the word of God. According to Numbers, chapter 12, verse 6. And if the prophets among you, then I will speak them in dreams. If there be a prophet among you and I will speak unto him in a dream. In one place when I ministered, the church was full of confusion. And quarrel in the church and also quarrel in the place. And it was a slum area. And it is a fisherman's area. And there was a problem among the fishermen. And half of them are believers. And half of the others means and they are full of RC and Hindus. And both the groups and we have CPM people. And see how the church will prosper. If the people among the church are divided or separated, well the church will prosper. But at the same time. And here of these two groups are CPM people. Can you understand? And who is the leader of the both the group is a CPM man. So I cannot do anything. And they could not do anything. And they went and they sent a petition to collector. And collector could not do it. And many peace committee meeting was made. And nothing was prospered. And everything was totally kept on. At the palace, the police made an order that they should not go for fishing and they missed the at that house. And both the groups and they borrowed money and they get the debts to level of thirty-eight lakhs to forty lakhs. And they transferred me from Tanju and to this area and because they could not do any other thing, the other servant of God, they could not control this. You go and get out at that place and even I was during the time of Christmas, after ending the Christmas service, I was transferred to the place, even I could not conduct the new meeting. Visiting not allowed. No visiting. No money. And there is nothing with me, I have to conduct the meeting and sit in the faith hall. And we have to stand on knees and stow hard and pray. And two teams will come. And they used to tell brother, pray for me that I must overcome. And when this team leaves and other team comes and say to me, "I will have to overcome." And this is how it was passing. And the government said, "It is impossible." But they used to conduct the peace committee meeting often. And one day there was a dream. I got a dream. I saw in the dream. It was a big serpent. And it was a big one. I was beating it. I stoned it and I was beating it, it was thick and was thick. And when it was beating, it became a people. And it became like a snake. I turned back. And another snake which is our small in size more than that. And then I bit nicely and these toes become a people. When I was thinking that both was destroyed. And the corporation lorry came. It crosses that place. I asked, "And what will you born in this corporation lorry?" And they said that and we will carry on the lizards and the snake. I said, "Here there are two snakes, you take it out." And the lorry which came on that side and it not took the two snakes and it went off. And this was the dream. I cannot understand anything. I prayed at. And the Lord said to me. And the both will give beatings in your hand. And he said, "The one group leader is sixty years old and another group it is forty years old and this is the big snake serpent and another one is the small serpent." And these two will give beatings in your hands. And the government cannot clear this. And this municipality lorry has passed away. And it will be clear in your hands. I prayed and I prayed and I sat at the time. And the big snake came. And it came with fifty to sixty people and it came rushing towards me. And he said, "Wherever I go, nothing is prospering, you tell me the solution." Okay, so now it is clear. And I thought that. And whatever you tell, it may be green or laws and everything will be solved and we will pray accordingly. And after half an hour, the second snake, the small snake came to me. And they were young and they were very hot and rushing towards me. I asked, "What is your decision and what you have the time mind to do?" And we too prayed brother and what you say, we will hear. Okay, government is not allowed. So I could understand the dreams is growing properly and ask to them and what I tell, will you obey? 10 minutes, two people, one solution. 1 year, 2 months, closed, everyone gathered, new people, RC, Hindu, Pentecost, I was the one who was talking. Just sitting, sitting, saying, "2 people, amen, one person, finished, next week, everything, done." And there was a ten minutes of conversation between the two groups and the problem was going on for one and a half years but I saw the problem within ten minutes and they compromised each other and I was giving them the solution and asked, they went back to the home. And the Lord will tell something very clear to us. Have the Lord told you something? If it is still by God, it will be fulfilled. And if it is because of the multitude of business, it will not prosper. And if there be a prophet among you, I will speak them to the dreams. According to Joel, chapter 2, verse 28. I will reveal you through anointing. And the dreams will be revealed to the prophets and through the people got the dreams and visions. When I pour out my spirit upon every flesh and they shall dream dreams. Some are having anointing to tell the clear revelation for the dreams that they dreamed. And they said perfectly and this is the thing is going to happen. And Joseph had this and Daniel had this. And the son of Baal, the head of the son of Joseph, got the correct date, you will get your head, you will take it. And the speaker and the butler, they came and said that your head will be lifted up and his head will be put down. In the marriage matters or in your job matters and whatever it may be, you can see the clear dreams. But when you come closer to the Lord, if you have anointing and it will be fulfilled. And you can see if Daniel had the spirit of interpreting the dreams. But the shadow, mesha and night with nago, they don't have this anointing. Look unto 1:17 of Daniel. In the four generations, God gave them wisdom, knowledge, understanding, and all of them. For these four children, the God gave them knowledge, skill and now learning and wisdom but for Daniel, the Lord specially gave him understanding in all visions and dreams. And some they see the lying dreams. And one group they may tell us, saying by telling that and they may deceive the people and they will get the money from the people. And you have to identify them. And they will be in the church. And for some, they believe the dreams and they don't want to tell unnecessary things. And some, they will tell the dreams all the days. It's not like that. When I went to a house. And they were crying in that house. Because the elder boy of the house was missed. And the police, where he got married, they said hello and because he was not there, he was missing. And all were praying in that house. But there was no news from him. And I was the younger brother at time. And I attended the meeting in the local. Then I have to visit that house. At the end of the meeting, the one mother went to that house. And she went there and told the dream. And she said to him, "And I saw your son floating in the waters." When they were searching for the sun and they got the dream that your son is floating in the water. Immediately the whole family started to cry and the boy died and was floating in water. I asked why you were crying and they said this matter. Then I called that mother. I said, "Go to your home." And after the end of the meeting, why you came to this house? If the meeting is over, you must go to your house and you must run away from this place. I changed her way. And after we pray. And the boy came alive and see he was alive now. The dream that she dreamed was like. According to Deuteronomy, chapter 13, verse 1 to 5, you can see, if one was among you, who dreamed the dreams and say this and that, don't believe. Even if it prosper, if it happened, then you should not believe. If you have a dream, you have to believe. And the Lord that prove with you whether you love the Lord with all your heart, with all your soul and how could not under the dreams of the prophet or the dreamer that dreamed the dreams? And they will tell that and this is the dream and that is the dream and they are taking the talisman out and all those metals and don't believe those dreams. And he will take a show off by sprinkling the blood over the place and taking the dolls out of it and at last and he placed the hand over the sun and then identified who he was. Kindly don't believe such dreams and visions and don't waste your time and giving money to them. What the Bible says. And the dreams, visions and talents and grace are these are all the gifts of God. What the Bible says about the gifts? A yellow vase is a gift. If you have a vase, you can buy 15,000 rupees, 12,000 rupees. A yellow vase is a gift. And you have received freely and you must freely give and you have, do not give money for idle things. And taking the metal, fifteen thousand. If they take the talisman and they must pay fifteen thousand. And I can tell even the name of the person. And there was a man who was wandering in south side. In our village, a big stone was thrown. And he was a servant of God who made a great mistake in our ministry during the training time and he departed the ministry. And now he took this business. And they captured him. And because he went to the company in Tirupur and he said that I am going to take this magic out of it and asked them to shut off all the cameras. And they shut off all the cameras. And the camera operator said, "What is it that the camera operates, operates off?" He thought, "Only this place has a bomb, I will turn it off." And the hidden man asked the camera operator, "And why they have to shut off this camera?" And one place he did not take of the doll and there was the camera was kept on. And from the socks and the roll was entering into the pit. This is how the venticose people are deceiving the people and some people are wandering as an innocent. So I am telling you, you are not a saint, you are a sinner. You have to do something, you have to buy something. So I am telling that you don't want to wander or here and there and you become a prophet or a dreamer to dream the dreams and visions and you get the pump from God and become the powerful person. In Zakkaria, chapter 10, verse 2, it is telling that and they that see until the vain things. And in Hamiah, chapter 23, verse 25 and 27, and they tell the dreams in the wrong way or in a lying thing. And they tell the dreams and they tell in the wrong way and at the same time and they become the diviners who tell the dreams. And listen what I say. And Balaam was a prophet. And he was a wonderful prophet. And what he says will be happiness. If he curses, it is cursed. If he blesses, it is blessing. And such a powerful prophet is Balaam. But if you use this money, the next person will use it to deceive. But at the time when he deceived the people through the money and he called him as the final. And half of the people at the table, by telling that close their eyes, it is dark and they did not enter into the house. And listen carefully and the Lord is with you. You have the grace. If you resist the devil and he will go away, there is no need for the other to chase him with the devil. To my knowledge, I know the children of God, they see the dreams so sharply. And they will see so determined. And this morning, this will happen, it will be performed. And particular date and the visa is operated and it will operate all the time. And from this place, the tree comes and comes perfectly. So when they are telling and revealing this and you should not follow. What I say and you must become or turn into a gifted person. Let the Lord speak to you, to your children and to your family members. And they were telling like this and they made something to the church. Even our people, they allow them to tell the dreams every week, they will keep something telling for the whole week. And Joseph saw two dreams and both the dreams made him to go to the prison. When you look into Genesis, chapter 37. His dream made him others to hate him. But know what happened to him. And this dream was true. It was fulfilled. And his eleven sheaves as well. ரெண்டு சொப்பணம் பாத்தா யோசேப் அந்த ரெண்டு அவனை எங்கு கொண்டு போய் செய்திருச்சு சிரசாலில் கொண்டு போய் செய்திருச்சு.
And Joseph saw two dreams and both the dreams made him to go to the prison.
ஆதியாக்மா 37 ல நீங்க பாத்தீங்கன்னா
When you look into Genesis, chapter thirty-seven.
அவனுடைய சொப்பணம் அவனை எல்லாரும் பகிக்க வைத்து விட்டது.
His dream made him others to hate him.
ஆனால் நடந்தது என்னுதிரிமா
But know what happened to him.
அந்த சொப்பணம் அப்படியே நின்னிச்சே
And this dream was found research.
நெரைவெறிச்ச
It was full fill.
பதினொரு கதிர்கட்டுகள் என்னை வணங்கிட்ட
And his eleven sheaves as well serve
இது தான் பிஸ்ட் நடந்தது.
And this happened first.
எண்டாவது சூரியன் சந்தரன் நட்சத்தரங்கள் வணங்கிருது அது எண்டாவது நடந்தது.
And secondly, the sun, moon and eleven stars made obiections to him.
அப்படியே அவனுடைய வாழ்க்கையில் நடந்துச்சு அதை யாக்கோபு அப்பப்பத் சொப்பணம் பாக்குற ஆளு அதனால அவனுக்கு தெரிஞ்சுகிச்சு நானும் அம்மாவும் வந்து ஓனக்கு முன்னால உள்ளூவ இப்படியும் ஒரு சொப்பணம் பாத்தியா அப்படின் கடிந்து கொண்டான்.
And they were mocking at him and will you have a dream such telling that your mother and father and me too made an obiections to you?
இன்னைக்கு நம்முடைய சொப்பணங்கள் எப்படியும்
Today, how is a dream?
யாராவது சொப்பணக்காரங்கள் பின்னால போய்டாதிங்க காசு திட்டு போய்டாதிங்க
And don't take the money and follow after the dreamers.
நீ நம்ம ஆளுகளுக்கு도 போறாங்க பெண்டிக்கஸ்லுக்கு도 போறாங்க.
Even of the venti coso people and they were following such
யாராவது சொப்பணம் சொப்பணம் சொல்றாங்களா தரிசன பாக்குறாங்களா என்ன என்ன பெண்ண பாத்தீங்க நம்மடியாததான் கேக்கறான் பாதிவேற
And half of the people, they were asking even to me and will have a dream, any dreams or visions?
ஜபிச்சு முடிச்சு ஒன்னு எப்படி இருக்க உங்களுக்கு எப்படி எதாவது இருக்கிற மாறி கண்டுபிடிச்சிங்களாங்க
After prayer, they asked me whether you identify something from me?
தாயு செய்து நீங்க அப்படி போய்ட்டீங்கன்னா பிசாஸ் அப்படி எழுதுகிட்டு ஏப்படுவ
And please kindly, I ask you if you follow like this and they will make drag you like this.
செல்ல சொப்பணங்கள் உங்களுக்கு தூங்க உடாத
Some dreams will not allow you to speak.
யோபு ஏளா மதிகரம் 14 அவசனத்தைப் பார்க்கும்போது
When we look at the job, chapter seven, verse fourteen.
யோபு ஏழு 14
Seven verse sixteen. இப்படியிருக்கிறதை அரோசிக்கிறேன் என்னாலும் உயிரோடிருக்க விரும்பேன் என்னை விட்டுவிடும் இன்னாட்கல் மாயைதானே
14
Seven verse fourteen. நீ சொப்பணங்களால் என்னைக் கலங்கப்பண்ணி தரிசனங்களால் எனக்கு திகிலுண்டாக்குகிறீ
செல்ல சொப்பணங்கள் உங்களுக்கு தூங்க உடாத
And some dreams will not allow you to
ஆர்வோன் அந்த சொப்பணத்தைக் கண்டு கலங்கியு விட்டா
And Pharaoh was troubled by seeing the dreams.
நேபுகாத் நேசர் அந்த சொப்பணத்தைக் கண்டு தூங்க அமல் காலில் எழுந்து எல்லா ஜோசியக்காரங்கள் எல்லாம் குமத்தம் கூப்பிட்ட
And they began to and the morning and it not allow and he called all the suits the mornings.
உங்களுக்கு சொப்பண எப்படி வருத
How the dreams are coming to you?
எப்படி கார்ல போனா மாறுகோ இங்கே சைக்கில் கூட இருக்காது வீட்டில
And you feel like that you are going in a car but you don't have bicycle in the house?
வீட்டில் கொனி கொனியா தங்ககாச் பட்டனமாறுகும் காலில பாத்தா 15 பைசா இருக்காத
And this had bag full of money you may have but in the morning you will not have your miserable
எப்படி எப்படி சொப்பணாலும் அப்படி சொப்பணத்திலாது எதாவது கிடைக்கிறதா பாருங்க
What kind of dream are you getting anything out of the dream?
எப்படி உங்கள் சொப்பணங்கள் எப்படி இருக்க
How your dreams are?
உங்கள் சொப்பணங்கள் உங்களுக்கு தேவிகமாக அபிஷேகத்தால் கிடைக்குதா தேவனால் கிடைக்குதான் பாருங்க
And check whether your dreams is out of divine or it was received through anointing.
எனக்கா ஆச்சிரிமா இருக்கு செல்லர்களான் என்ற சொப்பணம் சொல்றாங்க அதா ஆச்சிரிமா இருக்க
I was amazed looking to some dreams and it was so marvelous to me.
அதை எல்லா எடத்திலும் சொல்லிட்டு தார்க
I was keeping watching to all the places.
அப்படி அப்பொழுவு இப்பொழுவு அக்கிருட்ட கத்தர் வந்து வெளியரங்கமா பேசுத
And outwardly, very accurately and the Lord is repeating them too.
எனக்கு ஜெலா சொப்பணங்கள் இருக்கிறான் எழுதி வச்சிருக்க
Even I had some dreams, I have wrote down.
காலங்கள் நெரைவெறும்போது நெரைவெறும்போது சொல்லு
After it was full fill, I will reveal it out.
எழுதி வச்சிருக்க
I have noted down.
கத்தர் அதுக்கு நேரதான் கொண்டு போறார்னா விச்வாசிகிற
I believe the Lord is taking me toward the dream.
அது போல உங்களுக்கு எழுதி கொடுத்துருன்னா எழுதி வையிய
Likewise, that some dreams have given to you, if you have given, you must write it down.
எத்தனையும் ஈச்வாசிகள் அருமையான அப்படியே பாக்குறவங்க இருக்க
And many believers and they that seem as see the dreams accurately are there.
Deva dhudhar eerigiravargalum irangigiravaramaayirundargal
Huh, eni nuu chile?
Adhirkamelaagakartanindhu naan on tagapanaaya abaragam
Eh, appudi oru sopanam parunga?
See what kind of dream it was?
Yeteniyanoottandugalakku munnaala pathath sopanam neeknamabesithirukkam
And the dream which was happened before the centuries and even today we were speaking it
Ah, anukirindu sopanam oru periyayeniyu chappadurukkara
And the dream which had song it was that and was a great ladder
Enniya pakkara, adhalai deva dhudhar lirangaiyaringi idairukkara
He saw the ladder there the dreams of God ascending and descending on it
Appudi irukun sopanam?
See how the dream was?
Ee vaathidairukkumodhi eni nuu chile yarunikira?
When he was looking into the ladder and he was speaking
Kattar ninnu marimukumala, directa pesukkara, naantha ellathiyu undakina, unni aasirudippe, unni naa kayudamatta, unni vittu naan velakavadila, remba teeli va pesukkara, even sopanatilaiye pesara
Not in a hidden way and the Lord spoke directly to him and he was letting him ascending and descending, the Lord is going to bless him and he saw everything in dream
Neekkum gude, anayikar nalal sopanangalapakara
Even today many are seeing the good dreams
Orisala naragathuponam, paralavathuponamma
Some used to say that I went to heaven and
Bible illa allam puuspuasa chulithirupa
And they that was not in the Bible, they used to tell something
Anga paya naragathala parishutha, angala pathamma, paralavathala nadigira pathamma, talagila solva
And he will tell upside down that I saw the saints in hell and the sinners stars in heaven
Appudi alla?
It's not like that
Oru Kerala la oru sagor, oru sagorunnu kuru sopanam
And Kerala's sister got a dream
Oru brother kuru sopanam
A brother got a dream
Enna sopanam?
What was the dream?
Paralavathala rindu oru highway marikila yarangu
And there is a highway that descends from heaven
Fulla alangirikkupattu oru vali
And it was fully adown wing
Fulla deva dhudharakalindu side ninnu pathu pathi welcome pannikirukkara
And the angels of God on either side and they were singing song and welcoming them
Adi yaringyaringyaringyaringyaru
And it was coming down
Appu ivur pakekara, ennanga visya, avri
And he went and asked and what's the matter?
Wait, Raja varar
And he said wait, a king comes
Raja varar
King is coming
Edukka Raja varar
Why the king comes?
Coimthurla oru pastor thukkarla, avarakutupurudukvarar
And the pastor Coimthur is there and he is coming down to take him
Appudi pathidairukkumodhi edu vendrichi, trumpa datchasi yar vendita? Charak thurudhi, saravuvarudhi
When you saw through the dreams and the chariot descended down and the trumpet sounds
Oru arathukittavandu unnai, ingirundu Coimthurunni yar pora? Andha pastor porar, radhatthaliyadi, radham meela porichu, thiripu porichu
When it reached the particular place and the pastor carried on this chariot and he went and he was went out
Oru aachrima arinisi
And he was amazed of it
Sopanam muddinjithu visarchi patha, adhee taitala, Coimthur pasi yarundha
And after the dream when you inquire the matter at the same time the coimthur pastor entered into glory
Ana, avar adhikkumunnaala, saagaradhikkumunnaala, ittunamuniki naa enga poovaa? Setupayiruvan chulite, adhikkumunnaala ellaa uyyakarangalukkutte, paduthukittae aramnara study kuduthite, radham vara podhi, ningala veli poogantada
And before he died and he was informing all the servants of God to assemble and he told them for half an hour he made a counsel to them and he said the chariot is coming please all departed from the room
Inna pathinumshala radham vara podhi ningala nishyee, ellaa velakiru, karakta pathinumshala radham, yarugundhiru la, enga teridhi? Aviyan kankal olavan parkraan
And he that has spiritual I have seen that within ten minutes the chariot comes and the chariot descended and let's see it
Ippidi pathavang yaradanakayuvithuna? Huh? Chalunga Anne la, pilathunudai manevi mari, naan sopanatilai veku vaidu padu padte chultra paadi keshtari
And many are there they're like pilot's wife that I was troubled they're like in dream
Ha, pilathunudai manevi alla nipisolivutta, andha neeriman nimittan naan sopanatilai nisindita Padada vaidu padu taandala eda pannipadada yaan chala
Because of the judgment I was troubled like anything in the dream and the pilot's wife informed
Neekiki namudai sopanangali appidi padada?
How does a dream today?
Yakobin sopanangal, paralavatharasanama kerdada
And the Jacob's dream is the vision of heaven
Andha arathukavann, vanathin vasal, Bethel interpretata
And in the place and he called as Bethel and it is the way of heaven
Oru yiruvadu varsha, avam maamiyar vitla settleaita
For twenty years he settled in mother-in-law's house
Appudiye maamanar vitliyukandtha
And he sat in father-in-law's house
Ana, naddada enna?
Know what happened?
Kattar orunna sopanathal chunnar, naa unni ingirukadukaan naan gonduvarla, nee adiga nara irundachchi, nee tagapana vettikutthirumbey
And the Lord said that and you don't want to carry this place and you carry it for a long time and you must return back to your father's house
Oru periyay pastorodeyappa
A big pastor's son
Halachana niyaka nupichu
If it turned the name then you will be identified
Famous, famous figure, Michelle
He was a famous figure
Ah, avam appa vendu pathingenna, vitliyirukumataru
His father will not stay at house
Avam ammatta pesukumataru
And he now speaks mother
Vittuke pumataru
And he never go to house
Vittu kase kudukumataru
And he will not give money to the house
Nala pension kase, adhupadukkai thamtham roundadichit jaliya sudhitirup
And good pension amount and he will go, move around faith home and faith home and he will go very
Yavlo uyyakaranga solipathaga, hmm, adu rounda
Many servants of God advised him but he will never stay, he will keep on
Yavlo jebichu pathaga, hmm, nadakkaveela
And many prayed for him but it was not happened
Ana, ellaa faitham bavari, ellaa kutthudhum bavari, ellaa conventionum bavari, avarikannala pension, analanala sadi jaliya sudhitin
And he has had a good pension amount, he will go ivory faith homes and he attend all the conventions and he attend all the meetings
Chidinupathaa, oru sopanam
Suddenly he got a dream
Orre sopanam
Only one dream
Night sopanathala, setupona avam akka vendu, va thambi poro, nee yankuda vaan chuliku
At night dream and sister said that and go see and you have to come with me
Setupona avam akka, sopanathal vendu ensi chulijaa, thambi, poro, va poalaan chulijaa And the Athoode ivurke edu puchichchi, ayoyo setupona akka kuuktaale, pochay nammasethruonti Anneyi kaalile indichu unni petti badukillan thukiti enga odi vittara Neera maneviittavandu settleaitara, saagaravarki engarundara, yana naana, anga pastor
Elder sister died and said in the dream that you come with me and he said it is everything is enough and he carried away all his better and he went to his house and was blooded with the wife and I was the pastor at the time
Neelaka aachrima arinisi, enna raadi, yavlo periyay pastorallan chulithiranga, orre sopanathala akka konduntala
I was astonished looking into it in a single dream the elder sister brought him to house
Orre sopanam, thambi, nee irukkardhu vestu, nee vaan chunaba parunga, marana boyam podichu, namla kondruvanga voldurugante, oodi poy vittlo kantada
In a single dream and the sister went to say in the dream and got the terror of death and he came back to house
Vittukubonadu matrallanga
Normally he reached house
Adhikkumparu rendu moonu varsha uyyarudanadu, ana moonu varshamo, appudiyay engine offaaita
After two or three years and he was lived forever alive and the engine was off for two or three years
Enna, ellumuga, andha ellumita, anga koyilupala, esama atal eruvaruvar, koyilukkaranga ukkarvar Naayosinki, enna kaipuri maritamunsha
And I was thinking how this man can
Saagaravarki appidi da
Until this death he will obey everything
Remba adada, andha oru chichcha appanittarana thiripi, mattama muddinju bedo
And you should not dance and like anything if the Lord switch off your everything
Ippudi, ippudiyav sopanangali irukkara
And such dreams are also there
Ah, abra, Yakobita kattar chunnar, nee kalambay, untha tagapana vettikunni va
The Lord said to Jacob and he would depart
Andha orre sopanam, avan thiripich
That one dream had turned him back
Yaaya dividigal, ellamadigaratte parkumbaladu
When we look into Judges chapter seven
Padinajavasana thay parkumbaladu
When look into fifteenth verse
Gideon marbidi marbidi kelvi kuttukondeyavare
And Gideon was asking as question again and again
Avandya avishvasa adigiritu kondeyavare
And his unknown verse was increasing
Appa kattar chunnar, nee po, palayathukullapo, anga oru thuk sopanasolva, andha sopanathakkeel, appudu davudhi nee thirappaduvaai
The Lord said that you go to the camp and there will be the one who tell the dreams how evil peace strength and by hearing the dreams
Ebbidi irukumara, andha sopanathakkeetapa rajo da, andha urundu varugaradana varkoodumai, appa yare Avanodey bayar Gideon chunnanu nee da, right yaringyavanda
And hearing the dreams only he were able to understand the cake which was rolling and the dreamer said that and it was still the subject, it was Gideon
Appa sopanangal enbadu, unni thirappaduthakudida akirukkavendum
And the dreams is one must establish you
Sopanangal enbadu devan pakka unni thirupakkudida akirukkavendum
And the dreams must be the one who must turn you to God
Sopanangal enbadu paralavathiparkakudida akirukkavendum
The dreams must be the one you must see the heaven
Ah, sopanangal enbadu, nee paavum chiyamal unni thadukkara dakirukkavendum
And dreams must be the one who must hinder you to stop singing
Adiyagamayiruvada madigara aara vasana thala, oru mansham paavum cheyyathu thuniyumbaladu, kattar avanai thadutha
In one place in Genesis chapter twenty verse six when one got courage to do the sin, the Lord hindered him
Appa avan chunnan, naan suttha kaygalodindu tapasinchaga, tapusirana, adu suttha kaygalodinchinja, appantha chunnar, kattar naan unni thaduthen
And he said that and I was doing with my innocence of my hands and the Lord said I stopped you
Sopanam unnadey paavajiviyath thadukkara dakirukkano
And the dreams must be the one must hinder your sinful life
Yakob, thanudai maamanarukkubaiyundu oodra
And Jacob here father in law and he went
Thanudai manevi pillagala iluthukittu oodra
And he took his wife and children and went from the place
Ana, maamanar thirinchitthu avanavara
But it was known to the father in law and he chased him
Avanai eppudiavudhi, avantrundu ellathiyu pudigundanavara
And he was thinking the plan that he have take away everything from him
Adiyagamayirupatiyoonu yiruvatinaala varumbaladu
When it comes to Genesis chapter thirty-one verse
Labantha kattar pesunna, nee yakobidathle, nanmi enri nishyekadu, thime, pesade
And the Lord spoke to them and that you should not speak down to Jacob either good or bad
Sopanam unni echchiri thu, unavi kuriyavalkay, saripaduthakara dakirukkavendum
Dreams must be the one must warn you and must attract your spiritual life
Unnadey sopanangali appidi padada?
How is your dream?
Nala deviigasopanangalakkeel
And you must answer for the divine dreams
Deva sitthamaanadu sopanangala ungelkavelipadutha
The devil of God will be revealed to you
Deva thanudai manadey velipaduthuvar
And the Lord will reveal his mind
Thanudai irudhey velipaduthuvar
He will reveal his heart
Nadakkavodha unkkel velipaduthuvar
He will reveal what is going to happen
Naan cheyyapoguradi abaragamukke, maripena
And will hide the thing as you going to
Thanudai uyyakaragi, ethirkathrisigalagi, uyyarulakichollamal devan edayum, cheyya, maata
And the Lord will not perform anything to the servant of God, the prophets
Appa ningalnaan devan, namalnaan devan de pillagal
We are all the children of God
Avan kodumbatal anjivarikina, avan kodumbatal edaavudhna, onak anjivarla oralakadu devan pesano
If I over there in your family if something is going to happen in your family, the Lord must speak among you
Appa yaradu oraladu, avvittla tharaplanikkaru orala irukkano
At least one in your family must be the one who standing in the gap
Andha oru appudiyav velipaduthuvar
And the Lord will accurately reveal it to you
Namaviswasi orutthare, intha cyclela alumniyapathara gundupibipar
One of our believer and used to sell in the cycle the alumni vessels
Alumniyay evrisalvar pathara lagundupibipar
And ever sell the vessels and alumni vessels
Orunna oru quartersla poi, porukkalavachada
One day he went to the craters and kept the vessels
Appa ellari arathukittu pathidite, naangavittla kattuvaro, appu idin gundupanara
And the look took the vessels and they said tell that and we want to show in house and
Ella, business muddinjithu kalamna, edukada, oray oru periyapathara illa
And after the business is over and one big vessel was missing
Ivur ellathinkattari, arame illantada
And he asked everyone and everyone said if there's not with him
Avarki sandoshama arinisi, ana periyathukkamachi, enna, aning nalabusiness, ellabusiness muddinjithu patha, oru rannadainurva kadaikun patha, ungar rannadainurva porukal yar thutbita? Yaror bombal thutbita
He was happy because he had a good business at that particular day and he earned two thousand five hundred but the cost of the big vessel was two thousand five hundred, it was missing and then one girl
Ivavittla vendu ukandji javikaravista
And he went to house and prayed
Andha oru block number, vittu number, ulle endha selfla adi irukkundradu, appidi night ditavakatra
And the night the Lord so shown him in a dream, the plot number, house number, in which shelf it was kept
Adhathnal neera adee quartersa poi, ellarin kuukte, intha block, intha number, intha arathukalapavane, andha pathara aruke, ayoyo, naan kavani kambo achitthani
And the next day the woman said that unknowingly I kept it on my shelf and we shown, so told the block number and plot number, the house number
Namalangalala avikuruyasopanangalakaradu, thana appa solikitturugan, oru vala sopanathala doubtaniyavandhrinigana, ungelkuporala velangirukun, naan viswasi
And not only the spiritual ones I'm telling about the dream that have in the spiritual things and if you come with doubts and the Lord is revealing it to you
Joseph, mariyalake, mariyalay thanudai maneviaga nimitan
And Joseph espoused Mary, this is why
Naimicha parakadhan teridhi, Esu anga uruva irukkara
After she was espoused and she was, he was came, he came to know that Jesus was found
Ibe enna pandan teri la
And he don't know what to do
Kolandha undaiyurukki, namai epirana kalyanakattara
And child was formed and how we can marry her
Oray Confucialida
And he was in confusion
Iba Confucianana, unnai enna pandrathu, ah, shari, eppudiavudhi ensi no, talivannunu final konta
In confusion he don't know what to do and somehow he wanted desire to cast her out
Iba kattar nightla pesukkara
Now the Lord spoke to him
Number teeli va pesukkara
Clearly he spoke to him
Mathew one, yiruvadu
One twenty of Matthew Abeni padi sindhitthukondirkayil, kattarudiyadhuudan sopanathil avanakkukana patti, daavirin kumarunagi yoseipe, un maneviaga mariyalay seethukolla ayappadadi Avalidithil urpattiya irukkardhu, pershutthavinaal undanadu
Ippidi teeli va chunnanana, andha nindhi avan somakka readyan
And she only, clearly it was mentioned to her and so she was ready to take the approach
Kattar avanakkusopanathala teeli va pesukkara
And the Lord clearly spoke to him in dream
Ah, appa andha, teeli vana satya avanakkukarachinana, nanbaragal, oravinargal, samudayaav, thanudai edayimayavasindikala, andha oru solitarna, appidi opukuttha
And he got this clear dream and so he will left away all the friends and relatives and he was dreaming on dreams
Neekketanavirikipidi vittu velipadthalakal kadaikara
And how many are getting such revelations?
Ipa pillaya, pillak kolandha parandrichi
Now the child was born
Kolandha parandrichi, shastrigalavani kitaanga, iipa kattar sopanathala pesukkara
Now the child was born astrologers bound at him and the Lord spoke to him
Mathew, rendu, pani rendu
Two twelve of Matthew Pinbu avagall eerothin idathirukke thirupipogavinta menjisopanathil devanala echchiri kapattu, veeru valiay thangal desathirukke thirupiponargal
Idiyar shastrigal
And who are they and they were all
Adhavasana, adhavasana
Avagall ponnapiinbu, kattarudiyadhuudan sopanathil yoseepukkukana patti, eerothi pillayay koli sayyatheduvaan Adanal nee yedundu pillayayum, adintaayayum kutikundu, egithukku odi poi, naan olakkusollum varikum angayiru enjam
Shuma, yoseep vendu, Esuvin tagapanna pairathada angaradu la Avam ovurundu kolandhey thukittu thiruthiruvan, naadunada, vittu vada, oona
And just they were not taking the Jesus as the one son and he was carrying him by street by streets and
Indha viswasa jiviyath kaapatharadukke, indha parishutha jiviyath kaapatharadukke, indha satyathinbadi ulle jiviyath kaapatharadukke, nee thukittu thiruthiruvaa, oodano, kaapathapadano
To preserve the life of faith, the life of holiness and you have to carry on the street by streets and road by roads
Unnadayarivu, unnadaybutti usepannakuradu, kattar enna solraradu cheyeno
You should not use your understanding and knowledge of what the Lord says you must obey
Ah, moonu shastrigal sopanangandavanna, veeru valiya avavanaadukkoodi vittam
When the three wise men, the three dreams and they departed in different countries
Ipa Esu parandtharana unnai, appidi mahimay ganallan kadaikala, enna karachidhi, ooravittu, ooravittu, odi, 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 pillaya kaapathara
When Jesus was born and they did not get any glory or honor and by they were escaping out of the place and they rescued him
Unnaday parishutha, unnaday deviigati, unnaday avishayakati, kaapatharadukke, nee engiinalum bavadukka readyarukano
And to preserve your holiness, divinity and anointing you must be ready to carry over any places
Ipo, prachanala muddinjichinavana nankira
We think that the problems was over
Appa kattar solrar, nee ellambi, Israel desathukuponch
The Lord said you wake up and go to the country of Israel
Ipa avam baiyapadra
Now he breathed back
Enna pandrathu?
What to do further?
Mathew, irandamadigara yiruvatirandavasa
Matthew chapter two verse twenty-two Ahilum argalayu, tan tagapanaaya eerothin patthatkukavandu, yudhey avin arasalukran indhi kelvipattu, angay poga payandan Apuludhaavan sopanathil devanala echchiri kapattu
Yabri, ibethan Nazareth ikkayushara
And now given to Nazareth
Appu idinene enna velangikkoorao, kattar avan, thanudai kumarunai pathuka, avar yoseepodu edaybadukadukke, sopanathay oru vali yahak thirindukonda
And now what we understand from this to preserve a son and to Joseph and it paid away to him in a dream
Ah, sopanam enbadu, devan, devan de pillagalodi edaybada, oru vali yahakavithirukkara
And dream is the way where the law deals with the child of God to be with him
Ah, vinana sopanangal mayay undubano
And this vain dreams or diverse dreams
Tavaranasopanangal pathu kodumbalakal kola piudadi
And don't make or have the wrong dreams and confuse your family
Tavaranasopanangalaisolini, ningal kolamakal kodumbalakal, mattakodumbalakal pirithivadadi
Until knowing the wrong dreams and you should not separate the family and confuse your family
Neekolakathal appidla cholranga
And today they're telling in the world like this
Ah, oramma vendu orarathukal solichchi, omgevittla damponnaduksonnara
A woman said in particular place that and the Lord said need to take the bride from your house
Oru maasan karchadu, cancelait
After one month it was cancelled
Appu yar chunnadu, madhul chunnadu?
Then who said first?
Chalunga, madhul indhamma, roadla poombo, andha ala pathitanga, ayoyo, omgevittla damga avianorunni kedaikusolrar, ekkola ponni Oru maasan karchip, kalyanak cancelaitchi, ibe ebbidiyade, avianor sonnara, ensnar
Before a man the spirit of God urged me to take the bride from your house and it was cancelled after a month and who said this?
Irudhey thundhalakal all, ningal avianor sonnaru solakuradu
And because of the instinct in your heart and you should not say the spirit of God said this
Analanala sopanangalani, ningal sariyana thulapurindukkala
So you have to understand the dreams in a proper way
Ah, ellar kandalay moduva
It is all close our eyes
Ah, indiki sopanangalakurithu, oralu ungelkavelakam karachiruk
And today you have got a little bit explanation about the dreams
Neetirkathrisi aanal, kattar sopanathil onodu pesuvaa
If you are a prophet, the Lord will speak you through dreams
Neen nalabavishayakalanda, kattar unkkel sopanathinmula mai velipaduthuvar
If you are a good anointed person and the Lord will reveal everything in dreams
Ah, Danielikumari bolakal sopanangalavellipadada
And the Lord have revealed every secret things and hidden things to Daniel
Yoseepukke devan de tittam, varungalam sopanathala velipadutha padada
The plan of God and the future was given or revealed to Joseph in a dream
Laban sopanathala echchiri kapattan
And label was worn of God in the dream
Abimelekkusopanathala echchiri kapattan
And Abimelekk was worn of God in the dream
Yakobu paralavatharasanate kandan
And Jacob saw the heavenly vision
Vanathin vasalay eniyayipartan
And he saw the gates of heaven, the ladder of heaven
Yakobu devanala echchiri kapattu, tagapana vettikutthirumbina
And Jacob was warned of God and he turned back to his father's house
Gideon sopanathinala thanid thirappaduthikundan
And Gideon stinten him to dreams
Salomon sopanathal, yana thakettu pettukundan
And Solomon received this to dreams
Yesu vin tagapanaagi, yoseep sopanathinala, nathapattu, kolandhey, parishuthamaay, pathuka paay, kondu vayushartha
Joseph, the father of Jesus and he was given a dream and he was rescued and preserved for peace
Ellar kandalay modi mulangal padiduva
Let us all close our eyes and bend our knees
Amen, nam sopanangandhal, sariyai, avikuruyasopanamulala mai maravendu
If we dream dreams and we must have the dreams of the spiritual things
Vinana sopanangal vendha
We don't want the vain dreams
Veerthamaana sopanangal vendha
And we don't want the unnecessary dreams
Swallayin tharachinaale parakara sopanangal vendha
We don't want the dreams which comes of the multitude of business
Mayayayi poi, sopanangal vendha
And we don't want the dreams of the right diverse vanity
Ah, etnaver paralavathasopanangalakana varumbaladu
How many have desired to see the heavenly dreams
Andha oru, umdri sitthate enakvelipaduthu
Lord, reveal your will to me
Umdri manadey enakvelipaduthu
Lord, show your mind to me
Naan pogum desathte enakvelipaduthu
And show me the country which I would
Indhaday varungalathte enakvelipaduthu
And show me the future
Ah, nalani, nee jebichingana, ongal sopanakara kattarmaathuvar
If you pray well, the Lord will make you a dreamer
Da, sabayakurithu ungelkavelipaduthuvar
Lord will reveal you about the
Desathte kurithi velipaduthuvar
Will reveal you about the nation
Janangalakurithi velipaduthuvar
Will reveal about the people
Un manevi purushan pillagalakurithi velipaduthuvar
Will reveal about the wife, children and husband
Amen, devan oru sopanam gudutala, adhala samadhana mirukon
If the Lord gives a dream, there will be peace to you
Vishaasoru sopanam gudutala, adhala kalakam mirukon
If there is a devil give the dreams and there will be
Devan oru sopanam gudutala, adhala aikiam mirukon
If the Lord gives a dream, there will be unity
Vishaasoru sopanam gudutala, adhala pirivinay mirukon
If the devil gives a dream, there will be separation
Avishayakathalani irundhal, unkkel paralavathun teriyom
If you wear an anointing, you can see the heaven
Ah, ellar kandalay moduva
Let us all close our eyes
Avikuruyasopanangandrala, kattaramai maata
Let the Lord change us all, the one who dream, the spiritual
Mahimayadarisike kudulala maata
Let the Lord Jesus, the one who see the
Vaayatharundu kakkalama
Let us all open our mouth and
Andha oru, umdri sitthate enakvelipaduthu
Lord, you reveal your will
Umdri manadey enakvelipaduthu
Reveal your mind to me
Enne kurithu, umdri varungalathte velipaduthu
And reveal your glory about concerning me
Naan enne cheyyavendumunbadhi velipaduthu
And reveal what I should perform
Paavum chiyadabudi, enne thaduthukollu
You warned me that I should not commit sin
Naan vilundu vohadabudi, enne echchiri
You warned me that I should not be falling
Umdri sopanangal, enne nithiyathukunnerai, valinadathato
Let your dreams lead me to the eternity
Hallelujah, hallelujah, rabba rabba ka rabba ka rabba rabba Oh, oh god, hallelujah Rebanamana ka shabaniyara banati rabala, hikka rabba 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 ka rabba ka thiraba lakathiraniya Jesus, 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 hallelujah Amen, 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 amen Enakorasa
I have a desire
Indha kutthudle, yoseepugalai orusalari kattarmaathav
In this meeting, the Lord must turn a group like a Joseph
Indha kutthudle, orusalari, Esuvin tagapanaagi yoseepu pola maathav
In this meeting, the Lord have to turn particular group of people into the Joseph, the father of Jesus
Indha kutthudle, oru kutthadare, kattar Danielai pola maathav
The Lord have to change one group of people in this meeting as Daniel
Etnavar appidi vanchikiri
How many desire like this?
Ah, appidi na kattar ungaladu daily edayvaduvar
If so, the Lord will deal with you every day
Ragasyangal velipadutha padao
Secrets will be revealed to you
Mariborul velipadutha padao
Hidden things will be revealed
Deva sitthav velipadutha padao
The love God will be revealed
Neen nadakkavendi, valigal velipadutha padao
The way that you want to lead will be revealed to you
Eba laba ka rabba ka thiraba ka rabba ka thiraba ka thiraba Devavum varliyavum aacharyame, maravum vaakal satyamannam Devavum varliyavum aacharyame, maravum vaakal satyamannam Ummalasannay thanvadi varinadati, univilum magimayil eechukalvi Ummalasannay thanvadi varinadati, univilum magimayil eechukalvi Devavum varliyavum aacharyame
Paavavum vaakal satyamannam Devavum varliyavum aacharyame, paavavum vaakal satyamannam Ummalasannay thanvadi varinadati, univilum magimayil eechukalvi Ummalasannay thanvadi varinadati, univilum magimayil eechukalvi
Ummalasannay thanvadi varinadati, univilum magimayil eechukalvi
Ummalasannay thanvadi varinadati, univilum magimayil eechukalvi Ummalasannay thanvadi varinadati, univilum magimayil eechukalvi
Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah Ah, devan de vaathelakai stotramanuva Avikuruyasopanakara lakakattar namu uruvaakumudiyai stotramanuva Kattar ovur kodumbathodu, ovur orodu, thanaarakal, teeli va edaybadumudiyai stotramanuva Sariyana pathiile, nathati, avargalaysharka, avar varam poogarara, avarkai stotramanuva Pidakumaranbarzutavianavarkai stotramanuva Ellamahimayavarkai selthi stotramanuva Jo
Pershutthamunna nalandavari, asuradikapattamidamaymin somuthukka, nindhiyodum stotthirikaro Thavartanvathil, umdri somuthaligalakundan, niraandavari, avianavari, umdri somuthalavandhan, neerumudal, neeravaran, avianavari, endavathal, aswadi, niraandavari Naangal paadi, methodithu, avila, kalyuvar, avila, mayilathanda, krivikaagam, kustotram, avianavari, indha kattav Maalevalile, engalod, pesunna, thana, nal, vartheelakage, echchirupulla vasanangalakka, nindhiyodum stotthirikaran, kattav Andhavari, naangal sopanangalakurithu, naangal keetam, andhavari, kattav, indhu stotram, tamri thirtkathrisi, kattav Mariboragallalai velipadutharadana devan, andhavari, avakal sopanangal mulama, darshanangal maay, mariboragallal velipaduthakara devan, andhavari Engalakumdakattav, naangalumdak, andhavari, engalak mariboragallal velipaduthakara, kattar, engalod, kudan, ningal, valinaduthumdi, agavendiklaro Thaniyilumdakattav, avan mariboragallal velipaduthakara, andhavari, maamshamannattur, vasamnada, devavianvaru, nodukudan, abidinala Andhavari, ragasyangal, shantiyangal, avan velipaduthanana, andhavari, adhuvala, thaniyilipol, engalumdak, machumidi, agavendiklaro, kattav Andhavari, indhu stotra, yoseepukkumdak, andhavari, sopanangalakandana, andhavari, kaapranathil sonnanana, andhavari Kattav, indhu stotra, the parvunudeshan, kattasopanangalakumdakattav, avan mariboragallal velipaduthanana, andhavari Adhuvala, naangalumdak, yoseepu pola, sopanangal velipadutharala, mariboragallal velipadutharala, engalumdak, machumidi, agavendiklaro, kattav Andhavari, indhu stotra, stotra, yamthum, yakopumdak, sopanangalakandana, andhavari Deva dhudhal, eyeridharan, irangaradumaga, sopanangalakandana, andhavari Deva dhudanang, devan angarundu, kattav, eni meelindu, pesar, vanathin, vasalindu, pesaradu, avan kandana, andhavari Adhuvala, naangalumdak, umdri sattathikkeekarulai, machumidi, agavendiklaro, kattav Andhavari, Gideonumdakattav, thanakvandhi, thothalakattav, andhavari, anasopanangandukattav, avan dadhimundu, satturajayitana, andhavari Adhuvala, naangalumdakattav, andhavari, thanaarakil, sopanangal, darshanangalumdak, naangal echchiri kapad, engal kudeshimdi, agavendiklaro Andhavari, sopanathilkudan, naangal, paavum chiyadabadi, engal pathukathukul, kattav Andhavari, indhu stotra, kattav, naalakil, labanumdakattav, echchiri kapattanana, andhavari Andhavari, sopanathil, labanodu, nee echchirikirana, andhavari Kattav, indhu stotra, yoseepukkumdakattav, andhavari, mariyalay sattukkala, ayappadade, indhu sopanathil, nee sonnierana, andhavari Avamidithal, parakaradu, pershutthamuladu, sannierana, andhavari Kattav, indhu stotra, andhavari, andhavari, eerothi, kattav, amne, velakumidi, agasopanathinmula maaga Andhavari, tha, kattav, Esuvin kutikundavann, andhavari, kattav, andhavari, ponaan, adhuvala Naangalumdak, yoseepu pola, sopanathinmula maan, naangal echchiri kapad, engalumdak, kudan, kudeshimdi, agavendiklaro, kattav Avianavari, indhu stotra, kattav, naangalumdak, thanaarakil, echchiripan, sattathikkeet, andhavari, naangalumdak, ellathinikke, engal, velakke, kantara, andhavari, tarathalengal, thalkupadikaro Thamaalevalile, engalumdak, engalod, pesunna, nal, halusani, kada, stotra, naangal, thanaarakil, velipaduthalulala, darshanamulala, kattav, andhavari Aviyan, neevadullala, engal machumidi, agavendiklo, indhu thuttil, kattav, payana sopanamulala, payana darshanangalakvaradabadi Kattar, engalod, padan, engal pathukathukmidi, angal, yarakathin, garathalopadikana, andhavari Kattav, epunnu, aayikari, darshanangal, sopanangalakandu, indha maymin, esu maymir, velipadumadu, naangal, mayimudak, tarshikke, engal, thaidi, agavendiklaro Thaketta daananda, vartham, bichivika, engal, pershutthamai, klesutthi, enikapad, udabari, keengal, aayitappaduthum, Esu, naamthal, nindiklaro, pidav